My brother's home neighbor.
It's north of them.
The one that doesn't smell.
Yes, this is not a paper factory. Whatever's over there.
Sugar, sugar.
Sugar, sorry.
I can't stand watch her.
And he said, nope. Yeah. Pulled it up.
Yeah.
And he's like, oh, there's signs of him right there. He said, continue using his. I'm gonna give you shot of cortisol.
Cortisone.
Cortisone.
Don't want to shed a cortisol, that'd be really bad.
Hydrocortin, whatever. They put something in my shoulder.
You go like this, you're cortisol.
And he said it was like the VersaSack or something. On my shoulder.
Yeah.
Where we get bursitis.
Yeah.
And he goes, that is actually pushing down a nerve that's pushing into your spinal cord and it's causing all your pain. Ever since then, it's been fine, man. I'm like, can I just get a shot? And he goes, what? Get this, so we're in the, we're in the room and he goes, well.
Serious action.
And he uses a few, something like that. And there's, he did his residency with Dr. Strickland. So he's much younger than Dr. Strickland. And I'm like, how did you get residency together? So he was coming here from there to visit Dr. Herplu. And he's like, I'll just have Dr. Herplu do it. And I'll stop and talk to him. I'm like, you guys, you wanna do a little boost scam and buy me lunch? So then she just fucking pull the drugs.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call Jesse, Griffin, Sten, Stet.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Disha.
Here.
So, we, we do have quorum, but we, I can't vote on quorum.
Yes.
All right, call the order at seven oh one. There's a copy of the city council packet in the council chambers that is located on the counter by the entrance here to coffee maker. Please leave the binder by the entrance for public inspection. And please do not take the binder to your seat or out of the council chambers, thank you. The city of Grant abides by the Nebraska Open Meeting Act and conducts business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is on display in this meeting room as required by the Nebraska State law on the South Lawn. The mayor and the city council reserve the right to enter into closed session at any time during the meeting in accordance with the Nebraska Meeting Act, even if the closed session is not listed on the agenda. It is the intention of the mayor and the council to take up the items on the agenda in order they are presented above. However, we reserve the right to take matters in a different order to accommodate the schedules of the city council members having items on the agenda and the public. We also reserve the right to adjust the order of the items on this agenda. Any person wishing to speak to public during a public comment is limited to three minutes per person with a limit of two individuals speaking per topic position. Please come to the podium and clearly state your name and address for the record and the agenda topic you wish to speak upon in a professional manner. Review and action on the agenda, did you ever have a chance to look at that?
Yes.
To accept the agenda for March twelfth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Can we move, Terney, second, that we accept the March twelfth, twenty twenty four agenda? Any discussion? Terney, how do you vote?
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carried. Review and action of prior meeting minutes, February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four.
I'm going to set the action of prior meeting minutes for February twenty seventh, twenty twenty four and waive the reading.
Okay. Terney moved and Kimberly, second, that we accept the prior meeting minutes and waive the reading. Any discussion? Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terney?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carried. Communications.
Okay, a couple of sort of office and meeting things and then I'll go over sort of where our focus is shifting as far as the projects go. Next, sorry, we'll start with the multimedia here. Library will meet at five fifteen PM tomorrow in, in the library. But again, library board will meet tomorrow at five fifteen PM in the library. Our public hearing will have a, sorry, public hearing. Planning Commission will have a public hearing on the eighteenth at noon. This is to review a conditional use permit. All necessary application guidelines have been met and therefore initiated the, uh, pursuant to our planning commission guidelines to hand out the public hearing and send out notices and so forth. So, but all, all the publications and the necessary actions have been taken in order to have the public hearing for the planning commission on the eighteenth at noon. On the nineteenth, twentieth and twenty first, I will be in Lincoln at the MPP Annual Conference with Lisa and Andrea. Appreciate them being, clearing some time from their personal schedule to attend that so they can get a better insight into our electrical wholesale supplier. Jesse on the twentieth will be at, sorry, twentieth, twenty first and the twenty second will be at the Brooks Institute and this year that's gonna be in Columbus. So new, new venue for them this year there. So looking forward to that report when she returns from that. Uh, the CRA will meet the twenty fifth at noon. I did miss Treeboard, thank you, Jesse. Treeboard will meet on the nineteenth at four PM in this very room. I did not intentionally miss Treeboard. CRA will meet on the twenty fifth, Monday, the twenty fifth at noon. And that will take us to our next city council meeting on the twenty sixth. We've started to shift our focus with some of the warmer weather. Yes, we had a one day crazy cold flash. One of the three turns into eight inches, but it was gone in forty eight hours, so. Super wet, super good, I mean, it was really good. Now we need a rain, pray for rain tomorrow, not turning into smell. So, uh, what we need this time of year is rain. The ground's open, the guys have done some digging at the cemetery and found that it is, it is ready to receive rain, so. Good news there. So we begin working on some of our spring projects heading into the summer. Bill has been in contact with our, with Johnson's for our sewer, our annual sewer cleaning and cantering. We're gonna split some of that up this year and have them do some storm drain cleaning and cantering to get a better idea of where we're at there. Those are much larger pipe, they usually don't get as full of debris. But it is nice to check those every once in a while. Give us a visual inspection and a record of sort of where they're at so we can have a plan going forward, which ones we think we may want to clean more frequently and which ones need to be lined or repaired. So we'll be, we'll be doing that with Johnson's this year. And mine is from Johnson's really good, so.
Do, do we know when?
No, he didn't say yet. He's contacted them to tell them we're ready. Whenever they're, they are working in McCook and Imperial right now, so we're hoping that they can swoop up and just catch us on their way through, so. Good news there. The guys worked today in, in the park, setting the foundations for our planters. So those, the concrete was poured there, the flares were poured in those open spaces. I don't know, if you recall, the, the open spaces in the parking lot to the east. Those are now poured with concrete, the appropriate depth for the footers, for the block damp planters that will go up, that will match the park, not the park bath, I'm sorry, the bathhouse for the pool, the tri-cotta brick, with the space on the top to hold a plastic insert for flowers. So we're excited about getting that project wrapped up this year and, and beautified. Flowers beautify everything, so. That's kind of, the guys did, were able to get the dugouts torn down on the south field. The next step is working on filling them in and packing them so we can get the contractor in to hold us some new dugouts. Also working with Coop, all, all in our capital out, we plan here for Park and Rad. Working with Coop vinyl fence to get us some pitching warmup areas for pitching warmups on the south and, south field and the east field, the northeast field. As well as we have ordered, which you will see in your bills and claims, we have ordered the shade structures from Versitube for the ball field as well. So lots of activity going on out there. Still waiting to hear back from Julie Cutler from Creative Sites on the site plan visit for the playground. We do have two beautiful pictures, very large pictures back there. If you'd like to see what the playground looks like or will look like. Those, those are actually Nicole Jaden's, so.
I know.
They're just on loan. So, yes, very cool to kind of see it come together. Or, or we know that their timeline is end of school when school lets out, but we should have a site visit somewhere between now and then to actually flag the area out in terms of what pre-workings to be done before they're located lines, electrical water, etc., sewer, so on and so forth, so. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of outside stuff right now. I'm getting ready for the warmer weather.
I like the sound of that.
Let's all have.
All right, thank you very much. Standing committee reports. Kimberly?
None.
Terney?
None.
Oh, there's nobody else. I was like, you're missing two, Lisa. No, dude, there's nobody else. I don't know why I'm, why I'm waiting there. I will go back quickly just to communications as well. Brittany and I were able to meet with the swim team head coaches on the first and we hashed out the season. Looks like it's gonna be, we got everything, the dates that we think we wanted. Now they just have to submit their plan to Swim Tsunami. That is their, that is the league that they belong to. So we're, we're looking forward to that. We will be submitting another application to hold the championship here this year. Didn't happen last year, but I'm hopeful this year. We, we have a few more letters of support from some of the other swim team around the area. So I'm hopeful that we can, we can secure that bid and hold it. That would close the pool for one Saturday. But I think it would be well worth it. Yeah, that's, that's a huge event, bringing in lots and lots of kids.
It's like ten teams usually?
Um, no, a team can be one, so there, there's sometimes twenties and two teams.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, yeah. So they do try and limit it, so you have to qual, you have to meet a certain criteria in order to go to the championship. You have to have done so many individual meets and I think maybe one relay now, I think, or something like that. Megan and, and Karen know way more than, I mean. It's, it was like, here, 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 I was like, okay, can we hold it? And they're like, yeah. I said, okay, let's submit.
Well, good, that's good news.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to skip.
Yeah, and, and do we, if we do get the bid, do we, do you let the, like, different businesses know ahead of time?
Yeah, yeah, so they, they actually handle all of the, we, we, we just have to have the site.
Okay.
That's our only requirement.
Well, I, I mean, just, you know, do, do we let the, like, prompte?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah. Cause if they could run a pizza special that day, you know, or something? Pizza in the park swimming, those two go hand in hand, right?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we would absolutely, as soon as we, as soon as we know, we would put the word out. And work with the chamber too, we're members of the chambers.
Right.
They would have some advertising as well, so. Yeah, that's, that's a great idea there. Also spoke, or we had the, the CRA met on the twenty ninth. We did, main thing there was to pay a bill. We needed to give our, our engineer, or sorry, our surveyor paid, gave him an update of where we were at the progress with the two subdivisions. Tom is, we're, we're near completion, Tom just got a few, few small things to finish up. We're waiting on one utility to get us their map, their proposed map back to us and then we can, we'll have all the requirements met in order to hold a public hearing for that preliminary flat review. So, exciting news there. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna have a new housing subdivision, even if it's just a window for sale. We're gonna be advertising lots for sale in Grand Nebraska, so I'm excited about that. And then I'm gonna go back to the CRA, the meeting on the twenty fifth, so the, the next meeting. So there, there, if you recall, last year, we had Amy Theland of Southwest Nebraska Community Betterment submitted due construction loan before us for two forty five Lincoln. That was unsuccessful, actually, most of, anything west of Carney was unsuccessful last year as we, we fight this battle constantly with Eastern Nebraska. We, we fall into congressional district three when it comes to those grants. And for those of you who don't know what congressional district three is, it's about ninety percent of land mass in Nebraska. It looks like a big Pac-Man facing Lincoln and Omaha. And the only other two congressional districts in the state of Nebraska are congressional district one and congressional district two, which is Lancaster County and Omaha. So, uh, we have a lot to compete with there, or sorry, Amy has a lot to compete with there. So we're hopeful this time we can get her done. She needs some, she would like some additional match money there to, to sort of entice that grant, make it look a little better there. So we'll be talking about what we can afford to give them in terms of match money for that grant, which will work good, and it's, it's not an issue.
So.
So. And that is it on, Terney, where's Sam? Good?
Okay, perfect, thank you, it was a lot. Financials, Jesse?
They're in process.
Okay, very good. Any public comment today? All right, moving on to unfinished business. This is the third reading, others will have to table it. Okay, Jesse, you went ahead and read that, please.
Ordinance number twenty four dash zero two dash zero one, an ordinance authorizing and directing the execution of the amended and restated total power requirements power purchase agreement by the city of Grant, Perkins County, Nebraska, with Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska to acknowledge and provide for limitations on the use of electricity to prescribe, prescribe the time when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect.
Thank you, Jesse.
I just table to the meetings. I will make a motion to table ordinance two four zero two zero one until the next meeting on the March the twenty sixth.
Yes.
Second. Kimberly moved, Terney second, that we table ordinance number twenty four zero two zero one to March twenty sixth. Any discussion? Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terney?
Yep.
I vote yes as well, motion carried.
Make sure Tracy can, hears, we can hear her before we go live on this next one here.
All right, our next is action and discussion on presentation from the twenty twenty two, twenty three audit. And Tracy will be with us in a minute.
Tracy, can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Yep, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Can everybody hear her? Do I need to go louder?
Yes, no, no.
Okay, yep, we got you loud and clear, Tracy, thank you.
Yeah, okay, so I'll probably just kind of start off with that benchmarking and that we go through each year. And so the first page, the first thing that we kind of look at is the unrestricted net position to total net position. For the government wide, we like to see thirty five percent governmental activities, twenty five, and then business type activities, forty. And so you guys are at thirty one government wide, about thirteen for the governmental activities and then fifty nine for the business type activities. And the governmental activities is a little low, but that's because you guys have so much restricted cash. And so it's really not concerning that that's lower than the twenty five percent. And the next thing that we look at is the top sources of revenue. And the franchise fees here above average at a hundred and eighty nine per capita. And the property tax, state allocation and the sales tax, you're a little lower than the per capita, but you continue to grow with the sales tax and now you're keeping your property tax down pretty low as you can. And then the state allocation is, um, kind of broke down in number three below with the highway allocation at a hundred and sixty three and then the municipal equalization at fifty nine, which is pretty much right at the average. And next, the governmental expenditures. The administrative is a little above average and that's because of, there, it looks like there are quite a few additional legal expenses and then property abatement this year. And the police, you're a little below average and then you're a little higher than average in the cemetery, library, rec and the airport. But it does seem like you're kind of making some improvements and trying to cut some of those costs. And the outstanding government debt evaluation, and we like to see it below five percent and you're at two percent. The unassigned fund balance to the general fund expenditures, we like to see thirty percent, you're at sixty. On the next page, the month expense and street cash reserves, we like to see twelve months, you're at five point four, but you've got that sales tax fund that you can transfer money into the street fund if needed. And then the levy rate, the average is forty one cents for the general and you're on thirty nine cents. So you're pretty close to average there. And then your debt service is at just under four cents and the average is twelve. The net depreciable capital assets to the original cost, we like to see that below thirty five percent and you're below, or sorry, above thirty five percent and you're above that in both the governmental and business type activities. The operating income to total operating revenue, we like to see fifteen percent. And the only one that really kind of jumped out was the waste fund, where it's negative twenty seven and a half percent. A lot of that relates to depreciation. But as far as the cash flow, there was still twenty six thousand dollar negative cash flow. And the debt coverage ratio, we like to see one point five. We go a little higher than that at two point one five. But there's, it looks like fifteen years left on the larger debt with NDE that will expire, I think, in twenty thirty eight and then the newer one will expire in twenty fifty four. And then the cash, for the general fund, we like to see that six months in operating. And that would be three hundred and eighty thousand and you've got seven hundred and twenty four thousand plus there's about four hundred thousand of budget stabilization that's beside, that's not included in that seven hundred and twenty four thousand. The business type activities, again, we like to see six months, which would be just over a million. And then the replacement, and it comes back up to number nine when that forty four percent gets below fifty. We kind of like to recommend setting some money aside to help cover any replacement costs. So we came up with five hundred and ninety thousand for that and then the restricted funds for debt. And so we like to see your business type activities cash at one million, seven seventy five and you're at just under four million. Any questions on the benchmarking?
Uh, depreciable capital assets, I feel like it was every higher this evaluation, like considerably than your last evaluation, I don't remember it being at a whack that much. Or do we know what is causing that?
Which one?
Uh, nine, the depreciable capital assets. I don't know if she, can she hear me?
Can you hear her?
Um, yes, I can. So what was your question about it?
So I guess what it, what, what is the major factors in that being?
Okay, so, so we look at the, like, the historical cost and then what the net book value is. So after depreciation and we just kind of divide that out to see, you know, how much of the depreciation has been used on those assets.
Were, are, are we on track for where we were last year? I just don't remember that number being that, but we could have been, I guess.
Yeah, so it actually went up from last year, so you've made some capital. That shows that you've, um,
Okay.
made some capital improvements or purchased some equipment.
I thought so. Thank you. Good question. Any other questions? Okay.
Nothing else on the benchmark, Tracy?
Okay, and then on the financials, you'll, I don't know if you've noticed, but, um, we did get the information from the Library Foundation. So we have that added. So the breakdown between the library and the CRA starts at page sixty one. So that's just something new this year when you're looking at the financials. And so then we did have that restatement in the financials and that was just to add the beginning balance to the Library Foundation. Any questions on that?
Nope.
And then we, you know, have those two letters and, um, the board letter, you know, we usually have comments, but we really didn't run into any issues during the audit. Everything went really smooth and we didn't have any concerns.
Good job, Jesse.
She does do a great job.
I did not have any questions on those two letters.
Any other questions?
Oh, I think we're good at this time, Tracy.
Okay, thank you.
We, we appreciate your time and thank you for joining us Zoom. I know that we've got some things going on and we appreciate you willing to take a second and help us walk through our audit report and appreciate the statement of good findings, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Yep. Bye.
Can they be together or each one?
They can, okay. Uh, we'll make a motion to accept the two letters from AMGL and the financial statements.
Kimberly moved and Terney second, that we accept the two letters for AMGL in the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three audit statement. Any discussion? Terney, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carried. Action and discussion on mayoral appointment to the planning commission Brandon Lyle, graciously accepted. When I asked him, he was like, really? I'm like, yeah. He's pretty darn excited.
Well, that was good.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, loved the energy and he, he'll, did he have a meeting in his belt yet? Or he will, understood.
Yeah, he will, he's actually already agreed to the first, to the public hearing. We're gonna get, we're gonna get his feet wet, quick, fast, it's gonna hurt.
I make a motion to accept mayoral appointment of Brandon Lyle to the planning commission.
Second. Kimberly moved, Terney second, to accept the mayoral appointment of Brandon Lyle to the planning commission. Terney, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carried. All righty, read along, also after long discussions. All righty, read along, also after long discussions. Might have twisted her a little bit, agreed to be on the planning commission.
She also get public hearing?
She will also be a public hearing.
All set, action on the mayoral appointment, appointment to planning commission for read-along, second.
Terry moved and Kimberly second that we accept the mayoral appointment of read-along to the planning commission, any discussion?
So, just real, real quickly with the appointment of those two, um, that brings us to five on the planning commission. Since I've been here, I don't think you have five. That is awesome because we need, we got a lot of stuff going on with subdivisions and whether this condition is permanent and stuff like that. That requires a full board in the event that someone needs to be absent or something like that. So, the other three members, Randy Hyden, Trish Jimenez, Patricia Jimenez, and Richard Turee, uh, on that order. Very appreciative of your mayoral appointments and thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. All right, very good. Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carried. Resolution twenty-four oh three oh one, a resolution adopting the revised personnel manual governing all city employees. Anything else we need to cover before we approve this?
Um, we had the meeting with the employees last week, I think it was last week. Um, and they really didn't have any concerns except for the way that the breaks are in many policy. Um, there was a overwhelming, main consensus among all the employees that they would like the breaks to remain the way that they are. Um, and not have their required thirty-minute lunch break. Taken, um, and that range from library employees to public works employees, just because of. They feel that they are not going to be as productive if they're working their eight-hour shift. Uh, if they're required to take a fifteen-minute break in the morning, have a three-minute lunch break and then additional fifteen-minute break in the afternoon. They feel that they are more productive if they have just the two fifteen-minute breaks. That sometimes, I mean, that was their whole lunch in the middle of the day. Um, or, you know, kind of blocks out throughout the day depending on the break. But, other than that, that was their main concern, um, among the employees when we met, so.
Okay, thank you for passing that on. Any, any thoughts?
I think we've pretty much discussed this.
Yeah. No, not, not any discussion.
Yeah, not, not any more discussion.
I will make a motion to accept uh, resolution twenty-four oh three oh one, adopting the revised personnel manual governing all city employees. Uh, as written in the most recent draft. Does that cover that?
Yeah, most effective of April fourteenth.
Effective of April fourteenth, second.
Kimberly moved, Terry second that we accept resolution twenty-four zero three zero one, resolution adopting the revised personnel manual governing all city employees. Effective April fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, any more discussion? Kimberly, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carried.
I just want to explain that April fourteenth, so technically you have, you have to have thirty days from passage to adoption. But the fourteenth actually lines up with the pay period, so. I don't know why, it just makes sense to do it then, sorry. So it's actually thirty-two days or something, thirty-one days.
That's fine.
Oh my gosh, these are extra days, no.
Sorry, I just, I wanted to explain why the weird, like, April fourteenth, what is it, there's a, there's a explanation, sorry.
Yes, and, and I knew that you were lining it up with the pay period, so. Very good, all right. All right, moving on to discussion on contract for services for street improvement projects. Twenty twenty-four one between CSC construction and the city of Grant. How'd that look? I do not have any concerns. I mean, it's pretty, uh, they're pretty standard.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything that was different or unusual in it.
Um, all set, action on contract for services for street improvement projects, twenty twenty-four dash one between CSC construction and the city of Grant. Second.
Terry moved, Kimberly second that we accept the contract for services between. CSC construction and the city of Grant for improvement project twenty twenty-four dash one, any discussion? Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. All right, water rate study, you have to move it to the end. Oh, yeah, oh, sorry, thank you. Motion carried, I was so excited about if I read study would.
You need to say yes and then motion.
Oh, I say yes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I say yes as well.
I'll say yes to put a motion.
Hey, I've been waiting for the water rate study for a minute. Since we started this podcast. All right, what was the conclusion of our?
So Randy apologizes, he is, Nebraska Water Water has their annual conferences. This week, March is like the annual conference for everybody, whether it's the league, us, N M B P, clerks. I mean, everybody's having a conference in March, so he apologizes for not being able to be here. It is pretty straightforward, uh, they did complete the work. Uh, I think, and then his wife, his wife joined us, I, I don't know if she was willing or unwilling. But she insisted on this and, and we were able to get things wrapped up before noon. I think they got everything done in about three hours, actually they shut up at about nine.
Yeah.
So, uh, they got things done in largely part to Jesse being prepared, uh, with everything, you know, ready for them. And whatever documents they needed, financials, so on and so forth, so giving another, it was suggestive. So that they can complete their work in a timely manner and get out of here before a CRE maybe happened that afternoon. So, um, we, we're right where we want to be, um, if you look at the, um. If you look at the, the last page, uh, we've, we've, we've always talked about water percentage loss. We do have some things that are on here, pool hydrants, um, they're, they're, that's probably where the most of your loss is coming from. He didn't know that twelve percent is actually acceptable even if you were mirroring all of those things.
Oh my gosh.
Uh, no cause for concern until you get into that eighteen to twenty percent water loss range. Uh, it lists the number of users, um, you know, you can go down that list. Our fees, annual revenue, three-year water average sold, I appreciate you doing the averages, I, I, I saved me a little work. Um, our projected annual revenue from water is right around four ninety-two. Um, we're, we, we're actually a little higher than that in some years because of drought or because of not, or because of a normal year. Uh, so that's sort of the in-between number, that's the number we should be shooting for. And we're, we're right there at four eighteen, five sixty, sixty, one eighty-six with the annual revenue required. So we're really close to, to where we need to be, a difference of about fifty-nine thousand, three eighty-eight in the positive.
Oh, okay.
So, generating about fifty-nine, again, we may lose that difference, um, in, in.
Right, it was really wet season.
Right, and people aren't watering the yards as often, you know, which is great, bring on a wet season, I'll adjust. I would, I would love to not water my lawn every once in a while. So, we are, we, he feels like we're covering our debt, we're right where we need to be as far as revenue goes. Um, we do have that fiscal policy, fifteen percent in that department and we're meeting that fifteen percent.
Okay, so we do not need to raise that.
No, absolutely.
Thank you. That is what I was hoping for.
And hopefully we'll get in now a routine of annual, because I think with the new loan.
Yes.
It had, but it, we had to have it annually, so, but it kind of got off because we thought they were, the first one we did, we had to have an initial one. And then one right after, so we kind of had help. So, um, hopefully this will fill, fulfill my requirements.
And he was supposed to complete this earlier, um, this was his makeup date because of the snow, a snowstorm that happened previous, so. Hopefully in the future we can work around that where it doesn't coincide with any R W A annual conference. And, uh, we can get him here in person, I know he, he likes to be in front of people. He's, he's really good at what he does and we.
Well, he only has so much additional information to share, so.
He, he's a, he's a wealth of knowledge when it comes to the world of water, so, uh, and you'll see later. Well, actually it's in the bills and claims. We, they don't charge for this service, uh, but we've, what we've done, our task is made a donation to any R W A.
Oh.
Um, so we'll make a donation in the amount of a thousand dollars to Nebraska Water. Um, and that covers so much more than this, like, I mean, Bill calls and I call them, uh, they don't charge for anything, other than being a member.
That's right. Right, right, well, and this is so helpful, um, because how else would we know where we're at when it comes to water?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you can probably put something together, but this is just, this is wonderful.
I'm gonna leave this one up to the ask my place.
Well, and, and it just goes to show, I mean, because we haven't raised rates in how many years now, I mean, it's been.
This was the, for the water, the initial rates, so.
Since the water meters.
Right, right.
So that was sixteen.
Yeah, so that's, that's really good.
I mean, two more years, we're going on ten years without a water rate increase.
Right, that's right, so.
And if, if these numbers continue and we continue to maintain those averages, there, there won't be a need for water. Which is great news, if we're covering our debt and we're able to meet our fiscal policy, then that's, that's where everybody wants to be. That's, that's a sweet spot, that's the, the middle of the tree, you know?
It's like perfect chocolate.
Yes, well.
All right.
All right, I'll take the chocolate now. If it is, it's gonna be Lindor chocolate.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that has to be. And do, do we need to accept that?
Please.
Okay.
Um, all except discussion.
Sorry, sorry, I just need it as acknowledged, as received.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just note that, um, that we received that, Jesse, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was such goodness, my favorite item of the whole.
Well, if you're, if you were a, if you were a, someone from out of town and you're looking to move into town and you saw the twelve percent number, you might find that staggering. But it's like, no, like, there's a lot of communities that are north of twenty percent on water loss.
So is that like, is that leaks or?
It's le, it's largely due to leaks and, and we've done a really good job at maintaining our infrastructure, uh, and, and we're improving our infrastructure. Um, you know, we, we knock on wood, you know, we, we tackle leaks as they happen and address those with water main fixes like replacing water mains. And we've done that on our newest loan with the N D E, um, and replacing seventeen blocks of water main. Uh, so, yeah, we're, we're making the right moves in order to mitigate water loss, so.
A lot of it's the flushing for the mains of the lines and stuff like that, that's.
And you got to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Otherwise you don't have.
Other issues, you keep them.
We have amazing water. Uh, either way, he said, you guys, he finds it baffling, but there's very few small towns left in Nebraska that don't have to do some sort of. Can, continuous water treatment. Uh, and he said, you guys are blessed, so hopefully we can continue that path. Because I really don't want to worry about a water treatment plant in the future, ever. So, good news, all, good news all around there, so, thank you.
Highlight of the evening, all right, action and discussion on resolution twenty-three oh three oh two, a resolution declare excess property equipment.
At least I made a mistake, it should be twenty-four oh three oh two, it is correct on the resolution, however.
Twenty-four oh three oh two.
I, you know, sorry.
It is correct on the resolution, all right.
It's correct or canceled?
Anything fun there, you get rid of?
Um, actually, in, in, in this, uh, the guys would like to keep the snow blower, so I would ask that if you do approve or make a motion for this, that you strike the Toro five twenty one snow blower. They used it the other day on the sidewalks and were impressed that it ran, so, we're gonna keep it.
All right, well, that's good, we got that, we got that up, did some cleaning and dug it out.
Yeah, we're, we're, you know, I look for a spring cleaning and this is our spring cleaning. I've really been on the guys about organizing, organizing, um, and getting rid of stuff. If you see in the bills and claims, we had to, we had to get a storage unit because we just, we're out of room. Uh, and it's not for lack of organizing, we bought chovening, we've been, we're, we're doing this, you know, to get rid of stuff. So, we, we, we're pushed to the max now with everything that we have to store inside. Uh, so, that's, that's for a later, that's for a later conversation.
Yeah, that one, we'll talk about in the office.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're gonna, I'm gonna be looking at an expansion or in addition to our shop services down there in the hills, so.
Oh, yeah.
Anyway, so nothing else on there, the, the various size water pumps and motors, uh, I'm just gonna have to contact Billy, there was just, it's, would have been too many to list one by one there. Uh, they, they were all working when they put away, Konic Manolta copiers over there in the corner along with the sixteen, uh, sixteen-port uh, network switches over there. Found an H D M I DVD player, somebody wants to rock one of those, I don't know how many people are still watching DVDs.
Probably my husband.
With our update of our computers, you know, we've been able to, to, we're gonna keep an extra for backup, but, uh, we're gonna get rid of a couple of computer monitors there. We've got some floor stripper and shine stuff that we don't need anymore with our new flooring. Um, two toilets from some, the toilets that were placed, uh, out of the airport. Yeah, it's just various things that we can get rid of, purging, uh, spring purging, so.
Good idea, all right.
Actually, I have two, two people already knocking down the door on the scoreboards, they were, they saw them getting taken down and they're like, hey, can we have those? And I was like, hang on.
You can't just throw things away.
All right, I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty-four zero three zero two, uh, minus the snow blower. The list to declare excess property equipment provided for the sale.
Second, Kimberly moved, Terry second that we accept resolution twenty-four oh three oh two, declare excess property equipment. And sell all of this excess stuff except for the snow blower.
I would just make a quick comment, uh, that mayor that, um, did change some verbiage in there. Most of this is not, uh, is not gonna bring hundreds of dollars. Um, so, we did change the language for some, uh, discretion, um, on, on my part. Um, and, uh, first come, first served on, on these items, uh, just so that we could get rid of them and we don't have to sit out and wait for it and all that, so. And it is, it is, uh, none of these items are bringing top dollar. So, it's just items that we have to declare excess in order to either say that they've been declared to recycle or that we can sell them, so. I just wanted to make a point of clarification on that.
And we're not making a hundred thousand dollars.
No, we're not.
You'll learn questions?
We make a couple of dollars off these.
Questions and toilets?
There's even a little bit of total in the print, so.
I know, or if there's.
All right, um, motion on the table, Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carried. All right, action and discussion on bills and claims, I wanted a chance to look at the bills and claims. It was a new list that Jesse had for us.
First, no one.
It actually kind of worked out, I mean, we've, we had a couple of bills in there that were gonna be over our deadline, so. Those ones kind of helped us on this one, actually, so, um, I'm very appreciative of that. Jesse wanted to come in and get those amended on Saturday, so.
Well, I came in and at least checked the mail to see if it was gonna be worthwhile. And then we had a few extras that came in Monday, so we just went ahead and added it, so that we could get it done.
And just a point of reference, those, that, that list doesn't close, we can actually go clear it Tuesday if we wanted to, we don't need to do that, just so that you guys have time to review them. Um, but, that, for those accounts can stay open for the start of the meeting, actually, so.
Especially if something is gonna be passed due.
Yes.
I mean, that, that definitely is a bonus.
Yeah, just wanted to make a point of clarification there.
Sounds good, didn't it?
All move, take tech actions on bills and claims in the amount of one hundred thousand, eight hundred dollars and four, or eight hundred four dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second. Terry moved, Kimberly second that we accept bills and claims, any discussion? Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Kimmy?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, motion carried. And we are adjourned at seven forty-seven, here I turned my husband, I wasn't gonna be home till after ten.
Really?
I don't know, I just, I guess it's just after I got done reading this, I thought, oh, we would, we would be here, you know? But I forgot it was pretty.
Suspiciously. I think it funny is more complex than that.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, she didn't say it.
I know, I know. And everything looked good, so. We got that nice report of much good steam.